Welcome everyone to our special community hall meeting. It, uh, we got extra hot hair, I don't know how we're doing. Um, it's always a pleasure to see my colleagues here and we have a special committee hall meeting this evening. So I'm officially opening the Kalamazoo City Commission Committee of the Hall Meeting for Monday, December ninth, 2024. And our first order of business is Will Carl, Court attorney. Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Decker.
President.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Pedal. Commissioner Wilson. Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson. Here, thank you, Court attorney. We have a motion to excuse commissioners Curry, Wilson, and Pedal, please.
移到 Spark.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess, supported by Commissioner Decker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Phil's name? Thank you so much. Next, Communications Manager.
Nothing to learn.
Thank you. Uh, next is an opportunity for public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone who is here in the chambers to make a comment. You'll have two minutes. Uh, you can talk on any topic that you would like. Just as a reminder, this is not a time for dialogue, but this is your time to provide any comments or concerns to the commission. That's the city.
Okay. I want to call the proclamation out to the captains. I feel myself as a prisoner of war into this world. I choose in God as my last judge to live in. I become subjected to involuntary solitude in all the frail people of the shackles I bind. Actively faithful to goodness, the promise of inheritance is in my mind. I have no choice but to serve my God, for with the evidence I've been created for my role. It's only within the world I am the captive daughter of Zion, for in my maker's plan I am seated as the queen of the south who rose. I ask you, have we all not been called into joint inheritance to walk in the royal priesthood? Royalty is a responsibility, is to be a servant unto our God and a protector of life. And you know that the heirs of this world exercise dominion over them, but it shall not be so among the chief of you. The chief will be your servant. Since coming out of the wilderness in Revelation 12, I've had no spake of my own to continue formatting the vision that grows. The foxes have holes and the bird of the air have nests, the daughter of women hath nowhere to lay her head. The corner of south and rose has become my home. In this period of being held publicly in Mizzou, I have done what I can, uh, to build on this prophesied ground. With not wisdom crying, understanding not put forth her voice, shake thyself from thy dust, arise and sit down. I present myself directly before the highest ranking officials of my city, although this proclamation is of the freedom to come and is also a plea from a prisoner of war to be freed. I know there is one that has held complete authority in this time. However, my civil rights as a citizen have been violated. The question of my sovereignty, my citizenship will further be investigated by call on the current occupying powers to protect me by providing safe accommodation and lodging. I would like to invoke Article 13, Section 2 of the Geneva Convention. Likewise, prisoners of war must at all times be projected, protected, particularly against acts of violence, intimidation, acts of insults, and public curiosity. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to make a comment this evening?
Hi, my name is Shona Espinoza and I live in the city. Um, we need to have some warming shelters. I don't know how many times we have went downtown to make sure that people are inside the mission, if they get kicked out, find a place for them to be warm. It's freezing outside. Last week was extremely cold outside. Um, the mission is probably one of the places that they can warm up in, but there should be places that's 24/7 for them to be warm. It's cold outside, it's freezing, and we don't want nobody to freeze. There's children out here on the street, there's infants, there's those that are pregnant, those that are disabled, our veterans, none of them should be out on the street. We need warming centers, we need plenty of warming centers that are 24/7 and they can access it easily instead of having like the one on Tuesday and Thursday, I think it's over from 10 to 2. Like, it's cold at night. I mean, it's cold during the day, but it's even colder at night. So we need something that's going to keep them warm even at night. We got some people sleeping in porta potties, we got people sleeping together, I mean, they're spread out throughout downtown and other places in Kalamazoo County, trying to keep warm and trying to survive because it's freezing cold. We even have children out here and we know that children need to be inside, they need to be safe because being outside is not safe, it's dangerous. Between the weather, the elements, other people out here, and just what's really going on in the heart of Kalamazoo, they could be harmed. Me going down there, I've seen a lot and I've never experienced a lot of stuff that I've seen from being downtown and there's a lot going on and I'm a grown woman and it's taken me back to times when I was growing up. So our children should not have to see this. So please, please look into and come down and thank you, Decker, for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to comment this evening?
Yes, hello, my name is Chase Platy. I would just like to agree with, um, my friend Shona, um, that there is not being enough, um, enough being done or talked about how to solve the crisis that this city is in. Um, it's a housing crisis, um, and it's a homelessness crisis. There's, there's families, veterans, kids, uh, there, people, people have no options and there's nothing being, being done or no plans being made, there's no, there's no deadlines, there's no, where's the, the plan where people can, can come and ask for options, to ask for help? Like, hey, I, I need, I need a place to stay, I, I lost my job, I, I need somewhere to go tonight, like, I, I got evicted, like, where, where are people supposed to go for, for this help, um, if the city is doing nothing? The warming shelters the city posted, they are, they are insufficient and they are closed, um, by like 4:00 PM and it is, it is cold at night and it is unsafe, um, uh, that there is no safe place for people to go. Um, there is no, there is no public place where, where people can, can just get out of the elements and be safe in this city. So it is this commission, commission's responsibility to talk about it and to make a plan for emergency shelters and to talk with the other emergency managers in this city to make a concrete plan, um, for an emergency shelter and warming shelters that is city-run and city-funded and, um, city-staffed because, because relying on, um, private organizations and is, is not enough. Um, relying on the library to do something to keep their doors
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to provide comments this evening?
Good evening, Toby Hannah-Davies, and I do live in the city. I just want to thank you for the money that's in the budget for home sharing, um, program to be planned. I am very pleased about this. I believe that home sharing will make available a lot of apartments and even houses in the community, um, because home sharing means that people who have more house than they need, like I did for a long time, will be able to, um, have a good match with someone to invite into their home to share that space. I've done this with, uh, four different, um, matches and I really recommend this as a way to create more affordable housing in our community. And I'm so grateful to all of you for voting at the February retreat to put money into the budget and for it to be in the plan for 2025 and that Milestone Senior Services is very excited about being the matchmaker that will, um, do the work to find homeowners who would like to have someone share their space with them for rent or for free, depending on the circumstances of the families involved, and for, um, people in the community who would rather live in a home with someone and share chores or be companions or whatever's needed. Um, I'm very pleased this program is working really well in other states. In Pennsylvania, I believe every single county has a home sharing program. Um, so there's great opportunity here for us to suddenly find all this affordable housing in our community that is from people like me who have grown children, grown grandchildren, know
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment?
Uh, my name is Angela Manning again, and I want to just give a great big thanks to Commissioner Decker for coming out and showing her support to the unhoused with a bowl of a pot of chili. I'd also like to invite all of you on Friday nights to be able to come out and just see and interact with the homeless and, uh, notice what their, what their struggles, their, you know, their strengths, their weaknesses, all the things that you might be missing when you're in here being busy with what you guys do. So every Friday, about five o'clock, five thirty, six, um, everybody is welcome and we'd love to see you out there and so would everybody else. Um, another thing that I would like to say is that, uh, in the ministries of the communities, I've noticed a lot of things happening. There's too many people getting kicked out, um, to go into the cold, I mean, like, anything will kick them out, they'll kick them all out. They're very rude, um, the staff is very rude, they're very, um, there, there's no professionalism to it at all, which I feel like that, that should be a learning environment anyways to, to have people going back into society towards a stepping stone instead of being a complacent place to be. Um, just a lot of things like, um, just, you know, it's just unethical, unethical things that are going on behind the policies of those doors and it's just, it makes me sad, I seen a veteran last night, you know, he had four police reports just that day, got kicked out of church, this and that. If somebody would intervene, um, before that and be following up, like, just as far as the resources go in there with the social workers, I mean, there's no up-to-date landlord list, there's no up-to-date, um, private landlord list, there's nothing that gives them any resources that they can do on their own. There's no computers, um, for anybody to get on there, like I said, going to the library might be a little bit difficult for a lot of people. I mean, there's just a couple of different things that, um, I think that they could really, everybody could really benefit from so that they can use their time wisely there instead of be there and know that they're going to get fed three meals a day and be complacent so they don't ever go anywhere with their life, but thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next please.
How you guys doing? Um, I couldn't help but noticing, um, that, uh, and the timing's kind of, kind of far out too, uh, in light of the recent shooting, but, uh, there appears to be like, uh, a certain fund that someone has maybe gifted Kalamazoo with, uh, for the special purpose of, you know, gun violence, you know? And, uh, that made me start thinking, um, I wonder if our law enforcement had, um, the kind of gun detection technology, um, that like Detroit does where you can, you know, even from your vehicle, or the kind that will detect the particles in the air, like, let's say someone has fired a gun recently, they have that device. So I guess what I'm asking is, is that money going to get spent towards that? Um, cause it's like, it seems like every time I, yeah, we meet, something else horrible has happened, you know? You know, I, eh, then we gotta, we gotta get to the bottom of it, don't we? So, um, since this is budget related, I thought I'd wanna bring that up. Um, I don't know what monies, if any, that you guys have earmarked for anything to do with homelessness, but, uh, whatever you could do is, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers who would like to provide comments during this public comment period? All right, so I want to thank all that took the time, made the effort to come down here and provide comments for the commission. Next, we're moving into the work session for this evening, which is focused on the proposed 2025 budget. Mayor Trespa.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and, um, glad to see everyone here this evening to look at our 2025 proposed budget and if we could get the presentation loaded here, it'd be great. Um, just wanted to let people know that our proposed budget is online at kalamazoo-city.org backslash budget and, um, actually 2025 and previous year's budgets are all listed there. Uh, we have opportunities for, uh, commenting on the budget proposal. Um, we, our public hearing is next Monday, the 16th, and there'll be a public hearing component of that to take comments on the budget. And then on the 6th of January, we'll be back and, uh, asking for the commission to approve the budget, so comments may be shared at that meeting as well. And folks can also email comments to cyocitymanager@kalamazoo-city.org. Just wanted to take a look back at how we got to, uh, today, um, at the work session. So going back to, um, January of 24, uh, we did, well, there was a couple of inputs that we received to the budget, uh, back in January 23, we did the community survey and in 24, we surveyed the caution as we went into our caution retreat last February. Um, and that prepared or gave us priorities and, um, and focuses of what we wanted to develop the 2025 budget around. So, uh, we tasked our departments to come up with programs and, um, special requests that are aligned with the powers that the city commission has laid out for the coming year and you'll see that this evening in our presentation. And then just a general, uh, development of the budget, operating budgets, we're doing September of 2024 and then, uh, 2020, October, we, we reviewed the budgets internally and, um, that led up to the budget being released and, uh, November, I believe the 15th was, uh, when we released it. So all the way up to, uh, tonight's meeting and then, uh, okay, so in January, we'll be coming back with, uh, budget approval. I'm gonna ask, uh, Chief Officer Ram to come forward and, and give you, um, some information on how we developed this coming year's budget. Laura?
Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor, um, Jen mentioned that we had a community survey that was done in '23. Right now, that is the most current survey we have. We are going to be initiating a new community survey in January of '25, but for right now, we use this graphic to kind of high level what we learned from that community survey. What you'll see here, um, we've got, uh, importance on the X-axis and you've got quality on the Y-axis. What that tells us are the programs, the services that our community thinks, um, are high importance, low importance, high quality, low quality. We'll really try to draw our attention to the lower right-hand quadrant where we see areas that our residents have said are important to them, but they feel that there's room for improvement in terms of service delivery. There you'll see mobility, economy, utilities, and safety. So certainly as we have a number of different inputs into the budgeting process, we try to keep the resident voice front and center in terms of where we, uh, direct our energy. So as Jen mentioned, we had our city commission retreat in February of this year, doesn't seem like it was that long ago and yet here we are. Um, heading into that retreat, we had a couple of things, um, that we were working on. We obviously have Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, our strategic vision. Um, we asked the commission to prioritize outcomes from Imagine Kalamazoo, um, from those priorities. We'll work with our staff to really assemble strategies that we're currently employing or we'd like to employ that we think would best help us achieve those outcomes. At the retreat itself, we went through and talked about all the potential strategies that could help us achieve outcomes and the city commission went through and evaluated those strategies based on impact and difficulty. With all of that work, we landed on these sort of top five strategies, um, that then helped inform the department requests of, that come in for the budget and our review and our preparation for the budget itself. So we had a lot of inputs coming in and ultimately we're here to kind of give you an overview of the budget itself, but more importantly is what does this budget mean for our community? What's, what's it gonna make a difference in the lives of the people that we serve? It means that we're gonna be supporting our families, that we're gonna be investing in neighborhoods, that we're gonna help youth reach their full potential. It means that we're gonna ensure the safety and wellbeing of our community and it means that we're gonna continue to strengthen our city organization. Now I want to provide some very high-level program and project highlights, um, starting with supporting Kalamazoo families. I'm excited to have our 25 budget include 1.7 million in our housing development fund, which is really a three-pronged strategy that staff want to employ with these dollars. Providing gap financing for mixed-income, multi-use family housing, which we've talked quite a bit about on many of the commission meetings, continuing to provide financing to make those projects possible and to get the units that we know that our community so desperately needs. It also helps to support rehabilitation of housing, preserving our existing housing stock with an effort to try to help promote affordable homeownership. And lastly, continuing to find creative ways to cover appraisal gaps. We know the market is not in our favor as we're trying to produce more and more housing units, so how can we cover appraisal gaps and how can we continue to look at rental subsidies that can make the housing that we're helping to produce and rehab actually be affordable? We're excited about RX Kids Kalamazoo in the budget, we did a lot of discussion on that, but just high level, again, this is a cash allowance for every birth that's gonna take place in the city of Kalamazoo after the program launch, that is anticipated to happen early next year and based on trends, that could help as many as 840 births in the city of Kalamazoo. This program provides a prenatal payment of $1,500 and then a $500 a month payment for the first 12 years of life, ultimately equalling $7,500 per baby. The 1.5 million that's in the budget is part of 8.5 million that's been raised locally to support this program. We're very, very close to the 10 million goal that allows us to have funding in place for the first two years of the program. We're gonna continue to fundraise with the hope of having a full five years of the pilot funded to be able to support. Also, I want to remind ourselves that this, our funding and the local funds raised is leveraging 1.4 million in TANA funds, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. This was actually, uh, supported in the state budget, a total of 20 million was approved by the state to support RX Kids expansion and 1.4 million of that is gonna be here locally leveraging our dollars. In terms of childcare business supports, this has been an ongoing priority for the commission. We want to continue to build on the good work of Southwest Childcare Resources and trying to find ways to support our home-based childcare businesses. We believe this helps increase access for our families, we also want to support those business owners, help them with their businesses, how can they be more efficient, how can they help with their networks, how can we help to continue to provide this valuable service for our community? And lastly, as we heard Toby acknowledge, the home share program, we're excited to build a launch feasibility study to understand this great model, how do we make this work here in Kalamazoo and how can we begin to understand the impact it could have in helping to match people in housing? For a homeowner, that can provide some income, it can provide companionship all across the board, it can also help us identify more housing units in, in an area that we know we have a lot of need to cover. In terms of investing in our neighborhoods, we're excited to continue the critical code repair program, in this case, uh, working in partnership with Community Homeworks, helping low-income households, uh, be able to preserve their homes, stay in their home, and only address critical repairs in order for that to happen. In terms of small business capacity building, these funds are, are really supporting two different programs. You've got the Core Six Day Program, this is a three-week intensive training, uh, it's offered by 135 and it's designed to help skilled construction business owners really work on getting their licensing and getting their networks to be able to get their business to scale. This will also support Black Entrepreneur Training Academy or the Beta Program. And this is a collaboration between Black Wall Street and Sisters in Business, it's a cohort-like training that really helps build skills, capacity, and capital for our businesses to help promote. We've seen some really great success coming out of these programs, we're excited to double down and keep up the effort. In terms of parks improvements, uh, in our general fund with our parks, we've got 375,000 going in for Melon Park, we've got over 500,000 that's gonna continue to support the construction of the multi-use building at our farmer's market, we've got 40,000 going in for Fraser's Park and we've got, uh, dollars in the budget to be able to help Kick Pool get a new boiler, which is pretty important if you use Kick Park, uh, Kick Pool. In terms of the streets and sidewalks, in our local streets, we have over 800,000 dollars supporting our local streets, that only does this help with preventative improvements so we can preserve the assets we have, but also helps to address critical street projects across the city and our neighborhoods. We also have 15.5 million in our major streets capital improvement program, we're gonna save the largest investments made on West Bank Street, Kalamazoo Avenue, and Douglas. Lastly, we're excited to celebrate the continuation of our sidewalk program. While we have a lot of sidewalks to address, we've been able to invest more than each year and we're starting to catch up. This 1.3 million in the budget helps us repair and replace sidewalks, curbs, gutters, ramps, and a lot of our pedestrian demanders that help people access places in our community they want to go. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Deputy City Manager Kick, she's gonna continue to She's going to continue to take over some high-level programs and projects.
Thank you, C.R. Welcome, Abaca Kick.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor. I want to talk about the investments that help our young people thrive. So with our programs that we have been supporting over the past three years, we're going to invest another million dollars into some of these incredible programs that help our young people thrive. These are youth employment programs, activities, and events that also include some of our youth athletics. These are summer camps that we know impact hundreds of our campers each year. Also, our Continued Youth Action Council. Those include our counselor and training programs, which participants receive about $500 each. These education programs help to teach teens leadership, teamwork, self-confidence, working with kids, and communication skills that help them transition into the, into the workforce as well. Our Kalamazoo Youth Action Council program provides input into K Zoo parks regarding programs, activities, and events that youth are engaged in. These youth also learn life skills from these programs as well. The Youth Engagement Employment Program in collaboration with KRESA NYOU to employ area youth ages from 14 to 21 years old. Those programs are held for nine weeks in the summer. Other investments that we're doing to ensure safety and well-being are the continued investment in our Bridging Opportunities Youth Program. As you know, from many of the data that we have showed you from our public safety are for the reduction of juvenile violence. The continued investment in bridging opportunities has helped to bring those numbers down. We will also continue to expand the license plate reader program. The data in 2024 again shows that expansion into the license plate readers will show the continued for more rapidly locating and stopping stolen vehicles and apprehending of those criminals. That investment will be another $100,000 into expanding those license plate readers. The Arcadia Creek Protect Grant is the largest grant in the country to be assisting with floodway and flood mitigation and remediation. The Continued Lead Service Line Replacements in the Edison Neighborhood, as you know, we've celebrated our 5,000th lead line replacement, which is an incredible milestone for the city of Kalamazoo. And so that continued replacement and investment of 14.5 million dollars in 2025 will be an incredible milestone again for our city. With more than $122 million in water infrastructure investments and over $12 million in wastewater capital improvements, Kalamazoo is continuing to show that safety of its water and wastewater improvements is amongst our priorities. We also continue to show investment in critical repairs of our public safety facilities as it is essential to our operations. We also, this really goes to show our, creating a stronger city organization goes through our good governance. Our DEI strategic planning, developing a DEI strategic plan based on our progress and gaps that remain from our 2021 MPHI assessment. So we'll be doing another $115,000 investment into developing that DEI strategic plan. We're also working on the crosstown facility repurposing. We have capital improvement funds that will consolidate and rehabilitate that to better